This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning and happy new year. Welcome to the Taos County Board of County Commissioners's Regular Commission Meeting of Tuesday, January the 3rd, and it is 9:03 for the record. Please call roll.
Commissioner Romero, Bob Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Miguel.
Present.
Commissioner Vehil.
Present.
Commissioner Brush.
Present.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Present.
Okay, next is inspirational devotion, and I didn't call upon anyone to be here, but I would like to say that this morning, as I was going through my devotionals, I came across these beautiful prayers that I'd like to share. So this is how it goes. Heavenly Father, we give you this year. We ask that you would help us keep you in the forefront of our minds as we make decisions and plans. We want to seek your advice in everything we set our hands on to. Amen. Commissioners, is there anything anyone else would like to add to this moment? Okay. Okay, let's move on to pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Bob Romero, till we get this straight, would you do us the honor?
Yo juro felicidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la república que representa una nación bajo de Dios indiscible con libertad y justicia para todos. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Vice Chair Brush, would you do us the honor, salute to the flag of New Mexico?
Happy to. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeo symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Okay, next, we've got citizens concerned. Citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. And just a reminder, no action may be taken. Is there anyone present in the chambers that would like to speak, to make a public comment? If so, please come on forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Good morning, good to see you. Mr. Neal.
I'm kind of worn out on this subject, but you've got it on the agenda for later. Code of Ethics. The last commission used it as a photo op. Good intentions, but as far as I'm concerned, you don't get any credit for good intentions unless you follow through. They never, the last commission never followed through on implementing the Code of Ethics for all equally. Now, we've had, we've had this thing over at the school bus routes. Historically, when we only had three commissioners, it was never a problem. The school board would give the county a list of the school bus routes, and that's what the county adopted as their official roads that they were obligated to take care of this week. And then, so they got first priority to do the sweeping, and then they got around the secondary roads. It was wonderful. The last manager, Correto, used the anti-donation clauses of weapon. He misrepresented the intention of the legislature when they did anti-donation. And they, and Correto used it to deny and prejudice against the secondary roads. I guess I don't have any more. Any questions? No. Blessing all, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak during public comments? Seeing none, let's go on. Okay, thank you, those that are attending virtually. So Anissa will let us know if there's someone. We're good? Okay. Okay, so there's no one virtually that would like to speak. Let's move on to item seven, approval of agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the. Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda is written. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Bob Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Miguel Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, now we're at, on board appointments. Eight A is discussion and selection of a chairperson for the Taos County Board of Commission, and I would like to have the honor and make a motion to appoint Vice Chair Brush as our chairperson of the Taos County Board of Commissioners for year 2023.
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and call for the vote, please. Commissioner Bob Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Miguel Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Great, and so I will turn this over, but I do want to say it has been a true honor to be a chair, and we had such a great team that supported each other, and I was very much supportive, so I am very grateful for that honor, and I'm also grateful for my vice chair, and such a great vice chair, she will do wonders for us. Commissioners, I also welcome each and every one of you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, outgoing Madam Chair, and thank you for your services past year or two years as vice chair and then chair, even though you didn't give me a chance to practice by ever missing a meeting. And this is, this will be the third year that we have a Madam Chair, which is probably historic, so, but guys, next year, might break that record. Just real quick, I just want you all to know that this is really moving to me because I recognize, and believe me, I recognize every single day that I'm the only not local person up here, and I promise that I will continue to listen and learn from all of you. I think we are a good team, and I'm looking forward to what we can get done together over this next year, two years, however many years we all have. So, thank you. And with that said, we'll move on with the board appointments. And Mr. Manager, do you think that as we, we, well, it is a board appointment, the vice chair, would, would anyone mind if we, as we go through each one, we just really briefly mention what the board is, what the requirements are, you know, how often they meet, so that we know?
Madam Chair, I think that's an absolute great idea.
Okay. So our next, item eight B is discussion and selection of a vice chair for the Taos County Board of County Commissioners, and what that position will do is when I do miss a meeting, you get to run the meeting. So it's another kind of administrator, administrative procedural role, has the same kind of vote as all of the rest of us, so.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for Bob Romero to be the vice chair.
Thank you, Miguel, and I would like the honor of seconding that motion, so. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Commissioner Bob Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Miguel Romero.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations, Vice Chair Romero. That actually makes it a little bit easier. Commissioner Romero, Vice Chair Romero.
Okay, I think you missed me. I, right? Because I don't remember saying yay. Yes.
Sorry about that. Now, congratulations, Vice Chair Romero, appreciate it. Item eight C is discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area Board, and Commissioner Vehil, would you like to just mention what that board entails?
Yes, so Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area is a board that really prides themselves in the cultures and traditions and keeping those alive. They offer many, many grants to, to, to help those endeavors and organizations that are really trying to keep those traditions and cultures alive. I would like to continue on this board. I've been on this board for a couple of years, and, you know, the first couple of years were a little bit difficult because of COVID, and so we were hindered somewhat, but now we're seeing the fruits of our labor and like to continue on that board and bring opportunities to Taos so that we can keep those traditions and cultures alive. And so I, once again, like to, I'd like to put that into the motion and remain on that board.
Okay, is there a second for keeping Commissioner Vehil on this?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Vehil, you remain our board member, and next, we need to select an alternate for this board. I would like to make, I would like to move that Vice Chair Romero be our alternate, and I would like to second that. Okay. And Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Darlene and Bob. Next, we have selection of a member and alternate for the Intergovernmental Council, also known as the IGC Board, and this is a board that meets monthly. Outgoing Commissioner O'Donnell was on this, and I was serving as the alternate. It brings together the, not just the leaders of our local governments throughout the Enchanted Circle, but also U and M, and, try to think of who it was, Kit Carson, so, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, I'd be interested in serving on that.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that Vice Chair Romero is our board member for the IGC. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Did we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Miguel. I thought you had, okay. See, you should have let me practice, Darlene.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Next is item E, discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the Landfill Board. Alternate for the IGC, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Ron Mastarenas serves as an alternate.
Is there a second? I will second that. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, and now we get to move on. Thank you, Anissa. Now we get to move on to the Landfill Board. Commissioners. I think the name is self-explanatory. I am not aware of how often they meet. I know some of these boards, sometimes we have staff sit on them, so if that is appropriate, Mr. Manager, please let us know.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this Landfill Board generally meets once a month on the third Thursday of the month. It generally follows the IGC meeting. Pre-COVID, everybody would meet in person, so they would do IGC first, then pause, and then go into the landfill, or it was actually, actually vice, the other way around, landfill first and then IGC. So if you had the mayors from other communities participating or a council member, generally they ended up being the same person, not that it has to be. Generally, either Jason, myself, or Edward Martinez is required to attend this meeting. And, and, but the, the board members always been a member of the commission.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. So Commissioners.
Madam Chair, if no one else would like to volunteer, I view what the county manager just stated, that I would accept that.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to nominate Vice Chair Romero as our board member for the Landfill Board.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mastarenas. Madam Clerk, please call for the roll.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
And next, we need the alternate for the Landfill Board. And, okay, I will happily volunteer, Commissioner Romero, to be your alternate, so, you want to, I will second that. Okay. Okay, so I've made the motion to be the alternate, and Commissioner Vehil has seconded. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
All right, thank you. See you at the Landfill Board. Next is item F, discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the TCEDC, the Taos County Economic Development Corporation Board.
And yes, I'd, I'll go ahead and explain a little bit of that. I, the current board member, and the TCEDC is, has been around for quite some time. I don't know exactly the date in which they began, but they, they are now, or we are now currently working on bringing back the Mobile Matanza, as well as they are very famous for putting on all these different trainings and educational pieces in regards to agricultural and endeavors here in Taos. I would like to remain on that board, and we're definitely moving in strides these days. We just recently received the food grant, and that was for one point, correct me if I'm wrong, 1.3, 4 million, and we're certainly hoping to get some more funding to make sure that this program is sustainable and can move forward. There's a lot of ranchers and farmers that are really looking forward to this. This board meets once a month, and so I'd like to make a motion to remain on that board.
And, and I will second that. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Vehil. I've seen over the last couple of years the work she's done on that board, and I'll also let you know that the alternate, which we'll choose next, is very welcome at all of the board meetings as well. They appreciate that. So do we have a volunteer slash suggestion for the alternate for the TCEDC Board?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Miguel. I will make a motion to nominate Commissioner Miguel Romero as our alternate for the TCEDC Board. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
All right, thank you both. The next one, item G, is discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. That's a board I've served on for the last two years. It meets quarterly. It is, you know, commissioners, counselors, mayors throughout the Enchanted Circle. Mr. Madrid was recently there, very helpful in promoting grant opportunities, for example, economic opportunities, also is, is the agent for our, our aging services, so our senior programs. If there's, if there, if there's no objection, I would be happy to continue serving on that board. It does occasionally meet in Santa Fe at the beginning in January, like next two weeks from now, it'll meet in Santa Fe for its annual meeting, and I'm sure both board member and alternate would be welcome at that meeting.
Okay, is that a motion, or? No, okay, then I will make a motion to nominate Chair, Madam Chair Brush, to remain on that board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, and now, is there someone who would be willing to join me as the alternate for that? And again, like the alternate, I'm sure is very welcome at all the meetings, and I actually would like to nominate Commissioner Miguel Romero to be the alternate for the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Manager, the North Central Regional Transit District Board.
This board is the Blue Bus Board. So this board consists of members of Santa Fe County, City of Santa Fe, Los Alamos County, Ria Reba County, City of Espanola, Town of Taos, Village Acosta, Taos County, a majority of the eight northern pueblos, Puebla, Sanado Fonzo is part of the board, Oke, Winge, Pik Reese and Taos Pueblo are not members of the board, so it does cover this northern region. There is a gross receipts tax that has been implemented on these counties, and that's how it provides the funding, so the tax comes to the county, but it used to come to the county and, and the treasurer's office used to put a check, now it's automatically intercepted. This board does meet on the, generally on the first Friday of the month at 9:00 a.m. This is hybrid and in-person right now, and there's also, on occasion, there is what's called the Finance Committee, and that will meet to go over the budget, and so it's, it's about a three-hour commitment on a Friday morning.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, who is interested?
I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, and then I would like to nominate Commissioner Mastarenas as our board member for the North Central Regional Transit District Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And now for the alternate for Commissioner Mastarenas on this board.
I will go ahead and volunteer.
Okay, thank you. Then I will second that. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote for Commissioner Vehil as our alternate.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Next, item I, discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the Northern Area Workforce Board.
And, Madam Chair, I can certainly speak a little bit to this.
Thank you.
I was the alternate, but nonetheless, I did attend several meetings. I, I believe they are quarterly, and this board does in fact gather with many other commissioners throughout the state of New Mexico to discuss workforce issues and endeavors to try to promote workforce. So that is what this is about.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil.
I'll, I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, then I would, I would like to move to nominate Commissioner Miguel Romero as our board member for the Northern Area Workforce Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mastarenas. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And do we have an interested person willing to be our alternate to back up Miguel on this? I would volunteer to, to do that, so I'll move to nominate myself as the, as the alternate for the Northern Area Workforce.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We're getting there, you guys, we're, this is always a long part of the first meeting of the year. Item J, discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the Enchanted Circle Community Organizations Active in Disaster, also known as the COED. And this is a group that was formed early in the pandemic, again, representing, representing key organizations, government and private sector in our area. So it was county government, municipal governments, Kit Carson, U and M, the hospital, the newspaper, various key players, the Taos Community Foundation, of course, big player in this, basically responding very quickly to emergency situations. It came back together during the snow squall, met again and came together during the wildfires. So this is not a group that meets consistently, although unfortunately, when there is an ongoing emergency, like the first year of the pandemic, it did meet weekly, sometimes twice a week. So this is a, a board that is important for us to have a presence on, and hopefully we won't need to ever show up. So is there interest from commissioners who serve? I've, I've served for the last couple of years, I'm happy to share that.
I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, then I would like to move that Commissioner Ron Mastarenas is our board member for the COED. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Thank you. And now, as an alternate for the COED.
Okay.
Okay, and then I would like to nominate Commissioner Miguel Romero as our alternate for the, for the COED. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item K, discussion and selection of a member and alternate for the Taos County Cooperative Weed Management Area Board, and I know Commissioner Vehil, you have.
I have.
Been on this board, can you tell us a little bit about it?
Yes, so I have to tell you, this is where we actually talk about weed, and I'm not talking about cannabis either. This is a really interesting board. I've really enjoyed, this board is made up of the mayor, or someone from the council, I should say, and the commission, other local organizations like Taos Soil, Water and Conservation is also, it's, someone from there sits on this board. The idea behind this board is to come up with some ideas on how to mitigate the weed, noxious weeds here in Taos, and because noxious weeds does affect the agricultural world, this is really an important board. I would like to remain on this board, whether it be the actual board member or an alternate, but I certainly want to give our fellow commissioners an opportunity to, to be part of it as well. So with that being said, I'll step back, and this board meets once a month, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil.
I'd like to make a motion to, for Commissioner Vehil to continue to serve as a board member for that.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil.
Yes.
Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Mastarenas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there an interested person, interested commissioner, in being the alternate for the Taos County Cooperative Weed Management Area Board? I will then volunteer to be. I overheard one of the meetings with that Commissioner Vehil was on, and it was fascinating. So I will volunteer slash make a motion to nominate myself as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Last one, guys, last one. Item L, Discussion and Selection of a Member to Serve on the Holy Cross Medical Center Nominating Committee for a One-Year Term. And I know, Commissioner Vehil, you were a part of this last year. Do you want to just give us a brief?
Right, and so when a position becomes available on the Holy Cross Hospital Board, the nominating committee comes together to actually interview the individuals interested in sitting on the board. So.
Madam Chair, I'd like to volunteer to serve on that.
And I will move to nominate Vice Chair Romero as our board member for the Holy Cross Medical Center Nominating Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Miguel Romero, seconded. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
And for this last one, we actually don't need to do an alternate. So thank you very much. We are now done with the.
Can we have some discussion?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and reason, I don't know if it's appropriate here, but I think it's important to say that we need to communicate between each other, meaning that if the board member is unable to attend, if we could reach out to the alternate to make sure we get coverage. I just think it would be better. We certainly want, I think it's important for us to have our presence at these boards there on this list for reason. And so I just ask that we communicate.
Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Vehil. I appreciate it. And a brief process note for our team, before our regular commission meetings, Renell will reach out and say, any board reports, or Nisa will, if Renell is not around. And what we do in order to just kind of like keep the rest of us who aren't on your board informed, and also the public and staff, is we report in. If you had, since the previous commission meeting, if you had one of these board meetings, just share your highlights, your notes, the developments that went on, so that we're all informed, we're dividing and conquering, but also communicating and keeping each other informed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, everybody, for volunteering. This is a lot to divide up amongst ourselves, but as Commissioner Vehil said, it's important. So thank you very much. Moving on to item 9A, New Business, is Approval of the Taos County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics, as we heard mentioned in our public comment this morning. Commissioners, I'm hoping and assuming that everyone has had a chance to read the Code of Ethics. What are your wishes as a team?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the Code of Ethics, but I do want to with discussion.
Yes, absolutely. Is there a second? Miguel Romero, seconded. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have approved that unanimously with discussion.
Yes, I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. And former Commissioner Fambro really worked diligently putting these together. And I'm sure there were many other individuals that participated. I for one appreciate the Code of Ethics. For me, it's a daily reminder as I walk in on, you know, what's expected of each and every one of us. I think a lot of that is just already built into us, but it does remind us and it keeps us grounded as commissioners, and it actually helps us to hold each other accountable. Because I know that it is tough as commissioners. Sometimes we want to kind of push through, but these Code of Ethics remind us how we should behave. And so I for one appreciate Jim's diligent work.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. And I will second your gratitude to former Commissioner Fambro. And I look forward to getting the new signatures on the poster on the wall. And just, we have actually looked to this to guide our decisions and our conduct. We have used this in a very practical way, not even all that long ago. So thank you all for signing on. Okay.
Madam Chair, we will, Steph will have it available for this afternoon to, for your signatures. We did have it ready this morning. We had a suggestion by one of the commissioners that we combine safeguarding to one word. We had it as two words. So we had to print it out that original one with safeguard as two words, safeguarding as two words. And so we'll have it by this afternoon.
Okay, thank you, Brent. And you might want to just stay right there, because item 9B under New Business is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Moving the January 17, 2023 Regular Meeting to January 24.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, it's my suggestion to the commission that we change the January 17 regular meeting to January 24. The 17th is the beginning of the New Mexico Counties Conference. And generally, it starts in earnest on Wednesday, but there's some parade meetings that take place on Tuesday. And Tuesday is also the beginning of opening session of the legislature as well at noon. So for those two reasons, I would recommend moving it to the 24th, which is the following Tuesday. And we have five Tuesdays in the month of January.
Okay, thank you, Brent. What are the wishes of the commission?
I would like to move that we approve the January 17 meeting, regular meeting to January 24 of 2023.
Thank you, darling. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ron. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, Brent. And next, we have item 10A, New Hires for January. And we have our HR Director, Ms. Gina Ealem. Thank you, Gina.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. Joining our Taos County team is Zach Garcia, who was hired into our Adult Detention Center. Namari Srasquan joined our Assessors Office as an Appraiser Tech. Damon Cheneska is our new Solid Waste Hauler. And we also have, which I apologize, he's cut out of the picture there, but Watt Bowling is our new hire into our Facilities Department as a Maintenance Tech. I also want to welcome all our incoming elected officials. Commissioner Ronald Mascaranias, Commissioner Bob Romero, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Bob Romero, Sheriff Steve Miera, Commissioner Miguel Romero, and our incoming Pro B Judge Suzanne Valerio. And again, thank you, welcome. We look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Ealem. That's, this is critical, right? These new hires are at the core of us being able to get anything done. So thank you. And again, welcome to all of the newly electeds. Thank you so much. Okay, and item 10B, Brent, would you like to take this one?
It's my pleasure to announce the appointment of Christopher Madrid as the incoming Deputy County Manager for Administration. Chris has experience as an economic developer for Rio Riba County. He's a project management experience as well, and also funding experience, going after funding via grants and legislative appropriations. So Chris is going to bring a wealth of experience to Taos County. He's also very familiar with our county government, having most recently been an employee of North Central Economic Development Districts. So we've worked closely over the last few years. And Chris is from here in Taos, and so he'd be a great addition to our team and look forward to working with him.
Thank you so much. Chris, please come introduce yourself to those people who might not know you yet.
Yeah, I love to advocate for other people, but I'm an introvert when it comes to talking about myself. From, my roots are Puerto Luna, the home of Las Milletima. I grew up in Las Vegas. I played basketball against the Tigers. My son gives me a hard time about being a Don. Moved here about 20 years ago. And this is a beautiful place to raise my family. I come before you with two emotions. One is blessed. I got two passions. One is my family, and this opportunity keeps me off the road and allows me to be with my nine-year-old who goes to Enoch's and go to basketball practice. And my family couldn't be happier. The second emotion is humbled. This area has great history, great people. Just, I know a lot of folks, being in economic development and studying rural America, Taos would be on the top two percentile of rural communities as far as its accomplishments. Every other rural community would love to be where we are at. So I know that I'm entering a very special place, and I hope to add some value to this process. You know, if I could design my own job, this would be it. There wouldn't be another place, or it wouldn't be another twist to it. This is exactly where I would like to be. And it's a blessing to have this opportunity at this stage in my career. I'm not sure my MO, how I go about doing my work. I picked this up when I started Taos 10, was part of the team that started Taos 10 20 years ago. I don't come to you with a lot of ideas that I think we should do. My role is to help other people pursue their ideas. My role is to look at the comprehensive plan and help move that forward, to listen to the commission and the vision that you have, to help bring that about, be a catalyst in that process, to support the county manager and get done what he needs to get done. I was very pleased, ran into Jason last week, and he made a comment that really hit home with me. You know, we need to find ways to say yes when we can. And we need to find ways to help people get over the speed bumps. A business coming to town, if it takes them too many months, it costs them a lot of money. How can we get that process moving as quickly as we can? So I think the county has great reputation at the state level for administrative work, for the team, the people here. I feel humbled that I get to work with this group, and I thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for saying yes, and welcome home. I'm excited that we have a fully filled out administrative staff, because as they know better than we even do, there's a lot of work that we are asking to get done. There's a lot of opportunity out there. And now we can spread out the work on those opportunities and the work in general a little bit more. So thank you. And your advocacy work has been very clear to us here at the county, the commission and staff over the last couple of years. We recognize your work in getting a residential substance use treatment center going, which is going to be happening in the former days. And we know your experience accomplishing that with Darren's Place in Espanola. And also very exciting over the last year, your leadership in the Rural Partners Network, USDA program coming into Taos County, or us being part of that collaborative. So thank you so much for your work, and can't wait to see what you keep doing together with Brent and Jason. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Chair? I would like to also welcome Chris to the Taos team. I was very excited to hear that you were coming on board. I think our Madam Chair has stated very well what you've already brought to Taos County. And so, you know, I have to tell you that once I heard you were coming on board, and you know, I know Jason, Mr. Silva has done wonders and has helped Brent move Taos County forward. So I think we have a great team, lots of work up ahead. But I will tell you that I have a list. And so I look forward to meeting with you all. We have lots of opportunity, as Madam Chair has stated very well. So now we have an opportunity to really push those ideas through.
Thanks. My county manager hit me with a list, started a list this morning, so I look forward to additions to the list.
It might be the same, because we're constantly. Let's hope there's a little overlap there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Welcome. Okay, and that takes us to Agenda Item 11. And 11A is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-1, A Resolution Establishing Public Meeting Procedures of the Taos County Board of Commissioners pursuant to the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. And if I might, I would like to, and we can do this with discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve it with two small updates. On page two, item seven, and let me just open that up. It mentions that we, as commissioners, may participate in a meeting by means of conference telephone. And I would just like to update that for the year 2023 to say by means, by, you know, that we may participate online or by phone when it's otherwise difficult for us not to be here. And the other small change I would like to include with our approval, should we so do, should we approve, is on page four, section seven. When we need to recess and reconvene, it talks about posting notice of the time, date and place for the reconvened meeting on the county bulletin board. If we could please include also county website and/or social media, I think that would be helpful to all of those who join us or follow us virtually. Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And next, 11B, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-2, A Resolution Adopting Policies and Procedures for the Conduct of Our County Commission Meetings. Commissioners?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-2, A Resolution Adopting Policies and Procedures for the Conduct of County Commission Meetings.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Miguel Romero has seconded. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And 11C, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-3, A Resolution Appointing Members to the Taos County Board of Adjustment for Calendar Year 2023. And we have our Planning Department Director, Ms. Rachel Romero, here to talk about this. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Hadameo, Mr. Silva. This year, the incoming board that we have selected is, the nominees are for District 1, Mr. Alex Abeta, District 4, Mr. Mark Yarovitz, and for District 5, Mr. John Tingyu. And Mr. Abeta, Mr. Yarovitz previously served last year. Mr. Tingyu is new to the board, if you so choose to appoint them.
Thank you, Rachel. And could you please remind all of us, you know, public and commissioners alike, what the responsibilities of the Board of Adjustment members are?
So the basic responsibilities of the Board of Adjustment are to hear variances, and they are also to hear appeals on decisions of the Planning Department.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, Commissioner Vehil.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
No, I was, Brent was going to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You might be asking a question. I want to make sure the rest of the commissions are aware of that.
Oh, okay. So my question is, I have noticed it's District 1, 4 and 5, but I did read there's only three? Is that correct? Can you explain how?
Don't think of it as districts. So the same thing with the Planning Commission. It's each, the Board of Adjustment is a three-member board. These three individuals currently reside in those districts. And so it's a little bit different on the Board of Adjustment, but it is a three-member board. We had a five-member board years ago, and we could never find individuals to fill the terms. So then with former Director Vehil, we got that adjusted to a three-member board.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, if I may, continue asking a few questions. So I did notice that it is interchangeable with the Planning Commission. So is that correct? Am I understanding correctly that if someone is missing from one of these boards, the others can be called upon to fill the position?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vehil, that is correct. Since it's a three-member board, if any of the members are absent, a member from the Planning Commission can sit in to keep that board for, what is the word? I can't remember. I'm sorry. For, so that way there's a consensus.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, then do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Miguel. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations to our continuing slash new members of the Board of Adjustments. And then, Item 11D is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-04, Appointing Members to the Planning Commissioner Commission for Calendar Year 2023. Ms. Romero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, our nominees are volunteers, I should say, is Ms. Judy Torres, Mr. Luis Caigos, Mr. Hank Sacks, Mr. Rick Edelman, and Mr. John Del Margo. Ms. Judy Torres and Mr. Sacks were previous commissioners on this board last year, and the remaining are new members.
Thank you, Rachel. And Brent?
I'd also like to back up for both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission. There was a notice published in the Taos News that gave a notice that for 30 days that we would be accepting letters of interest for the Planning Commission. So, these individuals that have been placed before you, they have submitted letters of interest in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to have a little bit more explanation on the process. Mr., County Manager just mentioned that it was advertised and publicized. And so, my question or concern is, I don't think that District 1 has a representation here. I may have kind of fallen down in really getting more information on this. I understood that there were some vacancies, a number of vacancies. And then, so at this point, it seems like we have the nominees before us. But I don't think we have a representation in District 1, number one. And I think it may be a little premature to move ahead until we clarify what districts the different nominees are representing.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Romero, so we don't really base them on the districts. Oftentimes, we have, you know, just a selected few individuals who volunteer for these services. So, it's not really based on districts. It's just who's.
It's not based on districts, but it could be and maybe should be.
It could be and it should be, but as I've mentioned, oftentimes, we have so few volunteers that sometimes, you know, we're trying to scramble at the end, trying to get people to volunteer for these services that, you know, we just kind of fit them where the vacancies are. And my hope is to change those regulations so that way, more people are willing to volunteer for these services in the future for this specific resolution that we have here before you today.
So, my question then would be, would it cause severe heartburn or cause a problem in the committee meeting its responsibilities if we were to delay it to the meeting of the January 24th and reevaluate?
That's a good question, Mr. Vice Chair. And just, I think Ms. Romero used an important word here, which is volunteer. These people, it's kind of varied over the last few years that we've been watching. Like, I think last year, we had a lot of interest. And in previous years, it's like, you know, pulling teeth to get people to stand up and do these volunteer positions, which is probably a surprise to someone like you, as active as you are. But these folks put in sometimes a lot of hours. And sometimes, like, I can remember back in 2019, 2020, for example, put themselves in some pretty tricky public positions with the decisions they have to make in the public hearings that they sometimes have to run. So, if you have someone specific in mind that you would like to recruit, perhaps then we could, you know, postpone. Otherwise, I would probably recommend filling these positions today.
Yeah, I recognize that it is difficult to get people to volunteer and to serve on this committee. But yes, I do have someone that I had in mind.
Madam Chair, now certainly, there's two ways to handle this. We could proceed on the other districts if no one else has an issue here, or just totally postpone. But I know we've done that in the past. I see Mr. Hank Sacks here, and I so appreciate him for coming back. Obviously, he put in a lot of hours and time, and I think he has a lot to offer. And, you know, certainly want to make sure that, and he's, thank you for being here today, Mr. Sacks.
Ms. Romero, would you see any issue with that, with confirming four of the five and letting Vice Chair Romero have the conversation? Or Brent, what do you recommend?
Well, for myself, I would recommend that we'd go with the staff recommendation. And Anissa has it up that the person wishing to be a part of the commission does need to submit a lot of interest. We're going to make our 30-day timeframe. And then also, number two, it says, "Appointment of Planning Commission shall be postponed each year on or before January 15th." Each member of the county commission, because there's the conflict.
Okay.
Is that we need to seat the planning commission by the 15th.
Okay. So, that said, I would like to make a motion that we nominate Ms. Torres, Mr. Caigos, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Edelman, and Mr. Del Margo as our Planning Commission members for calendar year 2023.
Madam Chair, I will second that.
Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
No.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Romero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And congratulations to our new members of the Planning Commission and again, Board of Adjustments. So, next up, we have Item 11E, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-5, A Resolution Approving the 2023 Legislative Priorities for Taos County. And we have Ms. Laurie here. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Romero, and Commissioners. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Laurie Montoya, and I'm your grants administrator. So, I've not met you all yet, but look forward to meeting you. And I'd like to welcome you, Vice Chair Romero, as well as Commissioner Romero and Commissioner Mascaranias. He's not hearing me. Sorry. Before you is a Resolution 2023-5 for Taos County's 2023 Legislative Priorities. This resolution is requested annually and serves consensus on the capital outlay requests from Taos County, which is sought at the upcoming state legislature, legislative session, excuse me. In addition, this resolution coincides with our annual infrastructure capital improvement plan, our ICIP, and which also highlights our shovel-ready projects. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Montoya. I appreciate your work on this and everything else you do all the time. And Commissioners, as we know, this is, this is an important resolution because it basically just sends the message to us as much as anyone else out there in government and in the public that we're aligned in what we want to make requests for when we talk with the governor, our senators, our reps. Because you can all imagine what if we all five went off and running down to Santa Fe or down the block with our own individual priorities, then it would get bogged down real quick. So, thank you very much for keeping us organized. And thank you all for weighing in. Brent, did you have further comments on this?
No. I stand for any questions on the resolution. As indicated to you all, we do have a capital outlay meeting with our state legislators tomorrow. Ms. Montoya, Mr. Sanchez will be involved as well, the deputy county managers. And we'll present to them our capital outlay request tomorrow and then give them a little bit more detail on the requests. But I stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez is here, in case there's any specific project questions as well.
Commissioners, any questions? I see Commissioner Vehil, you have a question.
Yes, Madam Chair. My question is in regards to the historic county courthouse, the $7 million listed here. Is this the total amount we believe will be sufficient to finish the project? I know often, we do this in bits and pieces, but I did notice it was an extremely large amount, which I want to say would help us finish that, finish the building, the project, the historic $7 million. Is that sufficient?
I'm hoping, I mean, unless, if we have another COVID outbreak and prices escalate like the last two years, even that would be real, a tight fit. It's, the biggest stuff is going to happen now, but there's still quite a bit of large things that happen. Part of bringing the building up into compliance with building and life safety codes is that there'll be fresh air brought in, new air handlers. The electrical service is going to be taken care of in this phase, but it still could be, it still could be a little bit tight. It just depends really on the commodities market and the economy. It's just, it's hard right now to guesstimate even construction prices. They're week by week on most of our contracts, and we have to usually get them signed. And there's usually even a price escalation clause, just because of the way the commodities markets are right now.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may continue?
Absolutely.
So, thank you. That's fair. Understand that it's really hard to nail down the amount. Fellow Commissioners, I ask this question because we've encountered, most recently, that legislators have, are commenting on whether or not the amounts they're moving along are sufficient, and they want to see projects done. And so, I just, I know we're making every effort, and it seems to be a good year with some additional monies available. So, hoping that we're going to get fairly close to getting these projects done, if not complete. So, I ask these questions because I think it is the year to ask for what we need.
We have our contractor who's working on pricing for the funding that we have this year and the additional funding that we're waiting paperwork on, and to try and give us a balance. That way, we can have a better look. This, like I said, is every 30 days. It used to be suppliers would hold prices for 30 days. Now, it's anywhere from seven days to 15 days, if that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Commissioners, any further questions about our legislative priorities resolution? Okay, seeing no further questions, is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-5, A Resolution Approving the 2023 Legislative Priorities for Taos County.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Montoya. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, 12A. This is under Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. Item A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Change Order Number 3 for Taos County Veterans Cemetery, Electrical Gear, Landscape Irrigation and Pump Station, Site Work, Base Course, and Asphalt for the Cemetery. Mr. Sanchez.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Happy New Years. This change order, like we just spoke, is based on price increases, price escalation to complete our project. The notice to proceed was based on permitting, even state offices. We didn't get a building permit till August, mid-August, I think, about 18th or 20th. So, pricing, things were moving around. This is, all the price increases, like I said, landscaping, pump, additional asphalt, all the oil products have gone up. This is just at 3%, 3.25% of the overall project cost, which is real good. We haven't had many change orders. As you can see, number four, number three right now. So, our contractor is trying to, the subs are trying to hold the line. Things are moving along well, and I think it's something that we do need to take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, what is the timetable now, Richard, on the cemetery?
Right now, we have the crypts in place, and the weather has been hit and miss. We are backfilling around the crypts, dependent on the weather. Landscaping, the irrigation is probably 80% in. The area where the crypts go and the burial fields go are last because obviously, we have to backfill and get that all to finish great. We're waiting on our power from Kid Carson. That's been an issue, but we're working on a workaround with the Kid Carson engineers and an existing transformer that we have at another facility that's not being used. If the weather continues, we also signed the change order for a committal shelter, which that work can't begin until ground thaws, which should probably be late March, early April. We are hoping for substantial completion mid-May and ready to use by the end of May. I don't really want to bury veterans, but by the end of May is what we're shooting for. Contract will be extended through the end of the fiscal year because the initial contract ends right around April because of the change order for the committal shelter, which is fairly significant. It's only 700 square feet, but it's groundwork, concrete work. Can't do that in the wintertime if you don't want to have issues. So, that work will begin as soon as weather permits, and that'll carry into, like I said, contractor knows we want to be done May. They're already ordering materials for the committal shelter. So, I'm pretty, feel confident unless winter dragged on and we were getting snow in March, I feel confident that we'll be done mid-May.
Possibly Memorial Day or?
That's my goal. That's my goal. Landscapers are on board. Like I said, the biggest thing, all the piping, the pump station, the heating, all that is in place already. So, the minute the ground thaws, topsoil is down in all the medians, once they cover up the crypt areas, they can finish with their plumbing and then start planting. So, that's the biggest thing.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Sanchez on this change order number three?
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approve change order number three for the Taos Veterans Cemetery, as described in detail in the agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so, that takes us to Item 12B, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Change Order Number 4 for Taos County Veterans Cemetery, 202 marble niche covers, 100 memorial wall plaques, and 19 headstones for the veterans cemetery. Richard, it's all you again.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, so this change order is not part of the original scope of the project. It was never included in the original scope. We learned after the project started from the Department of Veterans Affairs that we presumed, which Department of Veterans Affairs supplies headstones and niche covers and all that. Well, we're not quite a, we are not a part of the Department of Veterans Affairs cemetery system. So, we have to supply our own headstones and niche covers to start off with. We need to have at least the columnbarium walls hold 200. The reason we order 219 is so that you can have them all covered and have some so that as people are being placed, you can have them engraved and then put on. And that way, you don't have any, excuse me, open areas. There's a memorial wall, which is for people that are lost in action, MIA, where you can just have just a plaque if there's no remains. And then, like I said, we're just starting off with 19 headstones just to start off with. These particular items are all Alabama marble, which comes from Alabama, and will match the state's veterans cemeteries throughout the other three that are in place and five to be completed.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Sanchez on change order number four for the veterans cemetery?
Madam Chair, motion to approve change order number four for the cemetery?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascaranias. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, and this moves us to Agenda Item 13, Department Matters. Item A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Acceptance or Denial of an Agreement to Assure Completion of Infrastructure and Standby Letter of Credit for David Mitchell, applicant slash owner of the Clark Summary Subdivision, which received Taos County Planning Director Designee approval on December 19, 2022. And for this item, we have Mr. Andy Jones, who is our senior planner in the Planning Department. Good morning.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair. Congratulations. And I'd like to welcome Vice Chair Romero and Commissioners Romero and Mascaranias. I look forward to working with all of you. And thank you, Commissioner Vehil, for your year as chairperson. So, this is, I come before you today to respectfully present your, for your consideration, the agreement to assure completion of infrastructure and standby letter of credit for the Clark Summary Subdivision, which was approved by me as the Planning Director's Designee on December 19, 2022. Included in your packet were the agreement to assure completion of infrastructure, the applicant's standby letter of credit, and engineer's estimate for the costs of infrastructure that still needs to be installed before the applicant can begin to sell lots, excuse me, a little crud, before the applicant can begin to sell lots for the subdivision. So, I've also included my Record of Decision, which was recorded at the Taos County Clerk's Office on December 20, 2022. The applicant, Mr. David Mitchell, has complied with all the requirements of Section 6 of Ordinance 2005-8, which is also known as of Ordinance 2005-8, which is also known as the Taos County Subdivision Regulations. The acceptance of the Agreement to Assure Completion of Infrastructure and Standby Letter of Credit will satisfy the requirements of Section 6.2.19 and provide assurance that the remaining infrastructure will be installed. The applicant has already installed all the other required infrastructure, and this agreement will guarantee the installation of the gas line, either by the applicant himself or if necessary by the county, using the funds made available with the standby letter of credit. As a condition of approval for the Clark Summary Subdivision, the applicant has provided this standby letter of credit, along with his agreement to assure completion of infrastructure, which is now before you to be accepted or denied. If you should choose, if you should choose to accept the agreement and standby letter of credit, the applicant will be released from the agreement and standby letter of credit when and only when all promised infrastructure is put in place, as attested by an engineer, and upon a final inspection by county planning staff. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for Andy about this item?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Just a quick question. I did read through this, but I don't know if I just didn't see, how many potential homes are we going to, is this going to bring?
So as a summary subdivision, this is for a five-lot subdivision. So under the Ordinance 2005-8, a summary subdivision can give up to five lots. This goes to the maximum of five lots, and each lot will be for one single family home.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Jones?
Okay, seeing none, what are the wishes of the commission?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to accept, and I'm sorry, but I'm looking for my, oh, here, I will make a motion to accept the agreement or to assure completion of infrastructure and standby letter of credit for David Mitchell, as stated by our senior planner.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Miguel. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascareñas?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Andy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 14 is the Consent Agenda. And again, just a fresh new year, a good time to remind ourselves and, and our participants of what we're doing in the process. The consent agenda is usually things that are pretty straightforward, that can be approved as a whole, as a group. But if any of us, if any of the five of us commissioners have a question, like, you know, where's the budget for that one coming from, or any questions at all, we need to then remove, like, make a motion to remove that specific item from the consent agenda in order to discuss or ask questions about it. So that said, is there anyone who would like to remove any items A through F from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? We kind of, a few months ago, got away from reading through every item. Happy to do that if y'all are interested, but it kind of expedites things if we just list, just state items A through F.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated on the agenda, A through F.
Madam Chair, second?
Thank you both. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascareñas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. And that brings us to Agenda Item 15, Our County Managers' Report and Matters. Mr. Hadamio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Meeting's moving quicker than we anticipated, so it's a good thing.
That's our goal.
So the, did confirm this morning with Holy Cross Hospital, the joint meeting between the hospital leadership and their board members will take place on January 31 at 1:00 PM in the commission chambers. So we'll add that to your calendars. So finance, I'm working with a company called REW out of Albuquerque, and to provide the finance director role through a, through a contractual basis with this company. And we're, so we're in the process of providing them information so that they could be able to give us a price code. The day-to-day operations, the human resource aspect of it would remain a function of ours, but the, the running and submitting the finance paperwork to the Department of Finance Administration would be accomplished through a contractor. So we've been talking to them for about two weeks now, so I do need to provide them some information. This would be in place until we hire a finance director, and right now there's not any applicants for that position. So as of December 31, we have 71 vacancies in Taos County, which equates to a 25% vacancy rate. I will traditionally email out the report by department. You'll be getting that in your emails, and they'll tell you specifically which departments were fully staffed in and which were lacking. Last week, I did have a meeting with New Mexico Gas, and this is regarding the gas line project of two SMU campus and the one to Piñasco High School, two separate projects, two separate grant agreements. Checked with Ms. Montoya, we do not have the grant agreements yet, but we need to start planning to doing that once weather permits. This would be some kind of sole-source contract with New Mexico Gas. New Mexico Gas would procure the contractor, and we would reimburse New Mexico Gas. So there's still a lot of behind-the-scenes paperwork that needs also to take place. And so we're in the process of having those meetings with New Mexico Gas. I know they want to meet this week. See if I could somehow squeeze that in as well. Then is, sent all of you an email we are set to receive, congressionally-directed spending funding from, that was approved by both houses of Congress, and so we should be get about approximately 2.2 million for the detox center, and this will be money for the construction. We have existing funding of $195,000 to plan, design, and construct a, in addition to the detox building. The detox building is the building that's coming over from the town of Taos to the county. We still need Department of Finance and Administration to sign off on that transfer between the town of Taos and Taos County. So that hasn't taken place. For Taos County, we also need to get an appraisal. So I got a price quote from a local appraiser, so we need to get an appraiser. We have the draft request for proposal that we would send out for a potential contractor to respond to that could provide detox services for indigent patients. So the, the funding that we do have does come from our healthcare assistance program fundings or indigent tax. So that money would be specifically for those individuals that meet the indigence rate. And so this will also be seed money for a potential contractor to get the detox open as well. So there'd be a separate contract with, with a person, with a company to provide the detox services. That's why we need the appraisal done. And so we're in the process, I need to get that, working on this week to get that contract So we have that, that's in process. I'm still, we're also still trying to meet with the DFA attorney, the general counsel's name's Patrick Schaefer. He's supposed to come down this week. Haven't heard from him. This is also regarding the Green Corridor funding, so he wanted to meet regarding that because there's also sub-grant recipients that are part of that grant agreement as well. Next meeting on the 24th, I'm going to be asking J.R. Logan to come and provide the commission an update on our good neighbor agreement with the Forest Service and let the commission know a lot of the good things that we are doing with Carson National Forest. We consider Mr. Logan part of the team. He may not be an employee of the county, but he is a fable, part of the county as a contractor. So I'm asking him to prepare a presentation for you as well. We're also in the process of going out to bid. We're on La Marada Road. We're getting ready to also bid out the Leo Valencia Road. That's the road is you drop down to go to Valdez to go up to the ski valley off of New Mexico 150. That slope is sloughing off, so we did get some money from the Green Corridor funding to shore up that road up top. And so we're working for engineers to get that out. That is shovel-ready as well. I did have a conversation last week with Secretary Serna from New Mexico DOT regarding the funding for Blueberry Hill Road. And I did speak with Senator Gonzalez last week as well, and we had assurances from former Secretary Sandoval that the money is in place for Blueberry Hill Road. Secretary Serna, he's not finding that funding, so I did inform the senator about that, and so we need to meet with Secretary Serna on that as well. And we do have a lot of lead, local government road fund project monies for Blueberry Hill Road that we need to implement as well. So, so we need to, I wanted to kind of get some headway with the Blueberry Hill Road because that also determines our capital outlay requests as well. So that kind of conversation with DOT will continue as well. And Senator Gonzalez remembers it the same way I do, that the money's there. Jason Silva was in a conversation with the secretary as well, the former secretary, because they want to postpone giving us the funding until New Mexico 68 up front is completed. I was arguing that we need the money now, not next year, because their argument with Jason, or the discussion with Jason and Senator Gonzalez was they didn't want to give us, release the funding until this was done because they're saying the overflow of traffic is on Blueberry Hill Road. What I was telling Secretary Serna, that we haven't seen an increase of traffic on Blueberry Hill Road. Those traffic counts have kind of been consistent with that as well. So there's no reason, we've had money on the books for quite a few years, some of our prior grant monies that we've obtained. So we do need to put that money to, to work. So, so I want to get that resolved before the start of the legislative session. And then also need to know who is going to go to the New Mexico Counties Conference as well, and that way we can register you. Also need to know who is going to the NACO Conference in Washington, DC. The, I have two of you down that are going right now. The travel dates would be February 11, and possibly the return travel date could be the 14th or 15th, depending on, on how you would like to return travel. And then we're in the process of trying to set up those meetings with our congressional leadership as well. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Brent. Commissioners, any questions for county manager?
Yeah, I have a question on Blueberry Hill. Is funding from the bipartisan Infrastructure Act being considered for Blueberry Hill?
The federal grant money, we looked at it, and it was too cumbersome to apply for, and we didn't look at congressionally-directed spending. That usually takes a while as well. And we were trying to get money for the Old County Courthouse and detox for those two projects through congressionally-directed spending. And then since Senator Gonzalez had assurances from former Secretary Sandoval on Blueberry Hill Road, we took DOT at their word that they would provide the funding for us. So we're going to continue to press them on that as well.
But that, that funding isn't capital outlay, it's something else?
It, there, it was something else. It was actually ran into their budget. And so it was ran into their budget, and, and so they were supposed to fund us a grant agreement, so it wasn't capital outlay. It was just some other funding that was ran in the DOT budget.
What is the total price tag for Blueberry Hill?
It's approximately over $11 million originally. Four years ago, we were pricing this out at $8 million, but with the cost of oil, that escalation's gone up to $11 million. And that road, those of you, all of us have traveled on it, it's continuing to deteriorate. So we need to get, at least for the funding that we have, get some pavement down on there. And we were just going curb, to curb, so we weren't increasing the footprint of the road. We just wanted to keep it the same so that way we could get our environmental clearance, and, and it would be a lot easier since we're not changing the, too much of the profile, and we didn't have to do a full-blown NEPA study. So we're trying to work within the rules so that we wouldn't have to do a full NEPA and to keep that cost lower as well. And this one's been shovel-ready for probably two years as well.
And so is a consideration for the full amount that is needed?
Yes. I would ask for that full amount. We've tried asking for a phased amount, but we've, it's, I'd rather go with the full amount, and then if the state can give us less, then we'll take what the state can give us. And so those are some hefty price tags for $11 million for Blueberry Hill Road, $7 million for the historic county courthouse, 3.5 million for the veteran cemetery, and, what I haven't also told you is that we are already in conversations with the governor's office as well on, on those three main requests as well. And that's kind of what prompted the conversation with Serna, is the governor's office had the secretary call us because we're trying to make sure we have that grant agreement. So we need to get that funding secured and, and get that road paved. Once we get Blueberry Hill done, as we already indicated to the commission, we're already in the planning of, the beginning planning stages, planning stages of Tom Holder Road. So we need to try to gear up Tom Holder to come next after Blueberry Hill Road as far as our.
Do we still need some, some funding for design or scope of work or land acquisition for Tom Holder Road?
Yes, we need all of that for Tom Holder Road. So we do have some internal funding for, for Tom Holder Road. So out of what we call the 399 funding, which is essentially a payment in lieu of tax funding that comes in, in June, we use that funding for our on-call engineering services, and, and then we use, use the 399 fund for specific districts. And then we use, use the 399 fund for specific district road issues. So if there's something that's needed in district, any of the commission districts, there is another allocation for money for that. And then we look for the bigger price tag monies from our grant funding as well. So since, so it's probably been a few years now that we use the money in the 399 for engineering because everybody says you need to have your project shovel ready. So that's why we use the 399 is to have the, have our road project shovel ready. There's also a separate contract, two different requests for proposal process. One for roads and then there's another one that's access that Richard Sanchez has through construction management and facilities management have access to a separate engineering contract also to get buildings shovel ready. So now both, two separate procurement processes, but both of those projects were awarded to a company called NV5. And so if we needed an engineer as an example for the community center and in Arroyo Hondo, if we needed some kind of engineering or architectural services, we have it off of that on-call engineer. So that way they're able to get us the price codes, get it shovel ready for us. When we either go for capital outlay or we go for any of the grant funding, we already have the projects lined up and shovel ready.
Thank you, Mr. Houdini.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Good questions. Commissioners, any further questions for Brent? I have just two. One kind of follows up on Vice Chair Romero's questions about Blueberry Hill. When you're answering, and thank you for all the details that you provided. I think that that's important right now as we have a new team. And good reminders for those of us who need the reminders too. You mentioned that to expedite the project, we weren't changing the profile of the road. That said, I know that you and Mr. Silva know that we've asked or inquired about before about potentially changing how Blueberry hits 240 so that cars and especially trucks aren't just sliding right down that hill into oncoming traffic or the fences on the other side of the road. Is there, have we been able to consider changing the profile there a bit to increase the safety?
It was already changed to begin with. Well, to an extent, it's a little bit different. Rephrase your question.
I'm wondering if we've been able to account for changes in how Blueberry Hill, at the bottom of the hill hits State Road 240. Because right now it's a straight on, it's coming downhill. And we know that every winter we have cars and trucks flipping over, rolling over, taking out fences on private property on the other side of the road. And while I know we can't really do anything about the people not driving carefully enough down that road in order to account for ice or other conditions and be safe, I'm wondering if there's anything in terms of the design of the road there that we can do to put in place. I know sometimes there's like a kind of a triangle island in the middle and the road splits off on either side, which could at least stop people from sliding. Just interested, like we have this opportunity since we're going after fixing this road in a big way. We have the opportunity now to maybe increase the safety of that intersection, which is pretty dangerous. It's the only place I've ever dropped my motorcycle.
Right, we'll take a look at that. It was always our intention to start this project on the north side of, on New Mexico, off of New Mexico 64 was to work from the north down. So it is a possibility, so we can look at those engineering profiles.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it. It's just, you know, it's, we don't want to be, I know that we always get frustrated. Like once we do the work, you know, saying, oh, well, we had the chance, we should have fixed that or fixed this. So if we can take that into consideration, I think that the community would appreciate it. My only other question is going back to the very beginning of your report about the Finance Director. And I'm curious, this might be a question from Izzy Lam about how we're recruiting for that. I appreciate you all getting in place, contract help for the time being because we need it. But I'm wondering how we're recruiting. And I use that word very specifically because I think it's going to take more than hosting and advertising that the position is open. I think that we do need to go out and recruit a Finance Director.
We've, the current method that we're doing is the Indeed.com. I think most of you have heard of about it, of Indeed. We've advertised in the Santa Fe, New Mexican, and we've advertised in the Albuquerque Journal. We've advertised in the Taz News. We've, obviously we've had it posted on the website. That current position is slotted for a beginning rate of $63,000. I believe that rate needs to be at $95,000 if we're going to start to attract somebody at the Finance Director level. The REW, the company that we're contracted with for the compensation study is going to fast track the finance positions, salaries to see what that should be. So then we still would need to change the policy to match that. So they were going to, and this was the conversation the week before, the week of Christmas, that if they could fast track what that salary should be so that way we could advertise at that rate. And then we had needed to make some policy adjustments as well. So I think part of it is, is, part of it is that it's, we're advertising too low. But we need to change that up. And then the two incoming commissioners are aware that we did an interview for the position probably two months ago now, we had a great candidate. She declined what her salary, starting salary request was $150,000. She felt that that was her value, was at 150,000. So that's, it's even a big difference from 95,000, 93,000 to 150,000.
Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up to that. Have you considered using Headhunter to find somebody to fill it? It's a real key position that just really needs to be filled.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Romero, yes. I'm not sure the same company we're talking to. But then my comment back to REW is, are you going to be able to be our Headhunter? But are you going to be able to find somebody at $63,000? And so they said, well, you do have a point with that if you're not, we're not slotted at the right salary level.
The real issue then is the salary to really, the real issue then is the salary to really attract someone to fill that position.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And yeah, I think that is important to note that we have some work internally to do to get the salary up to a point where we actually want to advertise and recruit. Commissioner Beal, you also had something?
Yes, and Madam Chair, that's the case for many positions. So we're definitely working on that. But I also wanted to let everyone know that this isn't just a Taos issue. This is, came to find out during BIPo, the last conference we attended. This is actually an issue throughout New Mexico and probably nationally, just finding individuals to fill these positions. But yes, the compensation is a big issue here in Taos.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Any other questions for Manager Hadamio? Okay, thank you, Brent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work that you're doing. Next up, we have 15B, our Veterans Cemetery update. Welcome back, Mr. Sanchez.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, like I said earlier, things are moving well at the Veterans Cemetery considering the weather. The bulk of the construction really is done. We have paving left to do and a little bit of sidewalks and the landscaping. The one major change order for the Committal Shelter, that's the one that is a significant part, but a separate item. And we'll start once the weather breaks. Now with the approval of the other change orders, supplies such as the crypt covers, headstones will be in place when we, when we're ready to open. We have also started purchasing some of the equipment required to run a Veterans Cemetery. Department of Veterans Affairs has been kind enough to give us their list of required equipment. So we've already purchased and received the excavator. We've purchased the skid steer for the Veterans Cemetery, but it hasn't been delivered yet. And we're starting to get quotes for the funerary equipment. So we're kind of working on essentials first. Part of this list includes furniture and mop buckets, hoses, that kind of stuff. That is for the administrative building, which we don't have funded yet. So we're working on the necessities for the Veterans Cemetery to operate and we'll continue to work on that. Like I said, our goal is to be complete and operable, functioning by the end of May.
Thank you, Richard.
Before you ask any questions on Richard, I failed to mention in my report tomorrow, Veterans Services is using the Commission Chambers for something called Commander's Call. They have a new Secretary of Veterans Services, Donnie Quintana. So they're going to, I guess traditionally this meeting's been held in Santa Fe. So they're going around the state. So I am going to ask Secretary Quintana to stay over for our noon meeting. And we'll start off with Veterans Services. That's why we're going to meet in the large conference room because they'll be using this. So I think we'll, and I've already talked to Secretary Quintana about our capital outlay request. So I think it'd be good for you guys to meet him. And then as we talk with our legislators on our capital outlay request, that Mr. Quintana be present.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Sanchez? Commissioner Beal?
Yes, I have, Madam Chair. Thank you. I have two questions. A while back, we spoke about the name of the cemetery. So I think it's something that needs to definitely be brought back and discussed with our incoming commission.
Yes.
And so I, do you want, did we get anywhere with that or?
We haven't brought it formally, but we're getting close. I believe, I don't believe, there's nothing wrong with Taos County Veterans Cemetery, but all the other cemeteries, both national and state that I've looked at, don't have, aren't affiliated with a specific entity like a county or city. Santa Fe is the New Mexico National Veteran Cemetery. I think we should name it Taos Veterans Cemetery because it's open to all veterans, not just Taos County veterans. And calling it Taos County Veterans kind of gives it that connotation that it's just for county veterans when it really, in fact, even while Taos County is running it initially, will be open to all veterans. And we have many second home people that live here that are veterans. And when they pass, probably would rather be buried in the mountains than in the plains of Texas or Oklahoma. We live in a beautiful place. And so that's just my thoughts. But it is something that the commission does have to start to entertain because I will be ordering a few things for, that do have the name on it.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the feedback on that. And it seems like something really small, but it really does say something. So the other question is, you mentioned earlier that we do not fall, this cemetery does not fall under the state or Veterans Commission. I'm not sure if I'm saying the right wording. So that means that we're going to be operating or having to hire someone to operate the Veterans Cemetery. Is that correct? And do we have any plans on somehow getting to that level where we can turn it over? And it becoming?
That is correct. So it was always been the goal to build the cemetery to national standards. Our first, that's why that fencing that's out there is the powder coated block fence because it meets the specs of the National Cemetery. Every architect and engineer that we've worked with has had that in mind that that is, the goal is for the feds to take it over or the state cemetery system to take it over at some point in the future. That was part of my conversation with Secretary Quintana a couple of weeks ago is if the state would be ready to take it over, they're not at this point. That's why that, Richard mentioned, the marble niche covers are white at a state cemetery. And so the state cemeteries are angel fire, grans, it's a beard, don't sound?
For beard, yes.
For beard. So those would look similar in nature with the white niche covers versus what we've all seen in Santa Fe as well. My conversation with secretary has also been to provide that support for Taos County. So if it's still under Taos County operations in July, which will be, and we'll get to the point where we're ready to bury somebody, is that we'll be in a partnership with New Mexico Veterans Services Department to provide the military honors, to provide anything that you get in Santa Fe at a burial service, that they would provide that for us as well. So I've already had, that was part of the reason I had the conversation with the secretary is because I wanted to start lining up those ducks in a row, so to speak. And that way it doesn't just fall on Richard and Gilberto to go and do it. And so there's a lot of work from now to the end of June that we need to get ready for coming up with an operations plan and as well as budgeting the money for it as well to operate it. Because we do need to have the mindset that it's, the county is going to operate it until further notice or until the federal government or the state government decides to take it over.
Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hadamio, Mr. Sanchez. I know you both work diligently to move this project forward. And so, because we know our capacity here is sometimes, really prohibits us from, you know, you know, moving it a little faster. So I do have concerns and hence why I asked the questions. But I'm very pleased to know that you are already thinking about that and making sure that we're going to have a plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal.
Madam Chair, I have another related question here. How much land does the county actually have out there? I've had questions from a constituent about the possibility of building a community cemetery. We have a lot of small cemeteries throughout the county. They're getting full and there's a need there. And I know you probably, the county manager and others have had the same question asked. And I don't want to add another project to your list of the many things you have to do. But is there a possibility of a community cemetery, long-term, could possibly be done out there?
Commissioner Romero, there is additional, the county has dedicated 20 acres of a 38 acre parcel to the Veterans Cemetery. So 20 acres has already been dedicated, surveyed and separated from the 38 acres. There still is an additional 18 acres out there right next to the Veterans Cemetery that Taos County does own. That's a policy decision. So if you tell me to do it, we'll do it. But there's a lot involved with the cemetery. What a lot of people don't realize, the registration of it, the requirements to maintain it in perpetuity, bonding and everything else.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
There is land, but it's a policy decision.
Thank you, Richard. Any other questions, Commissioners, for Richard about the Veterans Cemetery update? Okay, then let's go on to 15C, the historic County Courthouse update.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this one's been a long time coming also. We are moving along. Things are, you can see from the plaza to the north side. The building on the west side is completely gone. All the rubble is. side is completely gone. All the rubble is, I'm going to say as of this morning, probably 95% complete. There's a little bit of framing material that needs to be mucked out on the plaza side. And then we'll start with the demolition of the front portal. We have our contractor working on pricing for the first grant agreement that we have for the legislative appropriation for 2.126 minus $21,000 for arts and public places. So they're already working on updating the pricing so that we can issue a change order to continue that work. I know we have some of the paperwork. I think we have all of it. We're just waiting for the grant agreement for the 1.26 million from our congressional delegation. Hopefully we'll have that money soon. And we also applied for another matching grant for $750,000. What's actually happening right now, like I said, is we're getting ready to take down the north portal in discussions with our contractor. Nobody's quite sure how the vigas are attached to the building and the vigas of the original portal still appear to be in pretty good shape. So our goal is to take the two end pieces off that were added in the late 30s and then later in the 40s, get those completely gone and take the roof off of the existing original portal, evaluate the structure. The vigas look good, the posts do not. Once we take the roofing off, we'll know better. If we can leave the original vigas, that's what we'll do. We'll leave the original vigas, shore up the beams and tear out the sidewalks and replace the sidewalks and beams with new beams and new foundations. That's nice because it stays original, other than the posts, which have, a few of them have been replaced already over the years just because of rotting. The new posts will be elevated off the sidewalk as required by the building code to keep them out of moisture's way. But that's where we're moving and things are moving forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Madam Chair, one quick question. Has there ever been any discussions about the possibility of having archives in that building when it's completed? Rio Riva has a great archives. I don't know if you've ever been to Tierra María, but it is just huge. And I don't know exactly what the need is or what the county is doing for stories or documents now, but has it been discussed?
Again, that'll be a policy decision. I put it together and we'll get it ready for you. Then you guys decide what you want to do.
I wonder if it's been discussed at all.
Chair Brush, Commissioner Romero, yes, it has been discussed. So currently, and there's no lease agreement with Taos County Historical Society, started occupying a room and providing, and has collected historical documents from around the county and received other donations. They have received historical documents from the Treasurer's Office. Richard's and Gilberto and the guys have moved it three, four times and is a favor to Ms. Cordova. And so that's, that items are still up there. The Commission did make a policy decision in 2017 that they would like to see a museum occupy the second floor of the Historic County Courthouse. For that, we would need to also do a request for proposal. And so to your point, to, we could further put within the, put within the RFP process and archives, to your point. So the Historic Society has kind of filled that role of collecting archival documents. I don't have a sense of what they have. I know they have a lot of items that, from here in the county, that former Treasurer Triheo has donated to them. And I know they received other documents because Ms. Cordova has told me from the community members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Richard. Any other questions about the courthouse? Okay.
Just one other note, just to give people an update. We'll, in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably announce another public meeting. Might even be able to do a little bit of a tour. What we're doing right now, the way we have the fence, it's all the way out, takes the parking spaces. They have constructed a boardwalk. And so once the demolition on the portal starts, we'll move the fence to the inside of the boardwalk. And so the public can walk around. But we'd like to keep the public informed on what's going on and see, and that way everybody can see that there really are windows and doors and it was a walkway when it was originally constructed.
Madam Chair, if I could say that I was able to attend a meeting there and it was, you're absolutely right, very clear there was a opening there. So I think it would be nice to share that with the public. And it was just amazing. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Beal.
We probably, if I'd mentioned that day at the construction meeting, we'd probably actually do the public meeting on the plaza. We haven't reached to the gorge yet. They have that back room that maybe we could do it there and then do a walking tour late afternoon, certainly before sunset that we can have the meeting. And then any plaza merchants that want to go to the meeting, we'll take the meeting to them. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you guys. Keep us posted on when that meeting's going to happen. Thanks so much, Mr. Sanchez. Thanks, Brent. That moves us on to Agenda Item 16, folks. Commissioners, reports and matters. Item A, any requests from us for new business to be considered at a future commission meeting? This is not our only chance to ask for that, but if there is something we want to ask for, Commissioner Beal?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make sure that we continue with town and county meetings. And we typically have a town and county meeting at the end of the month. We've, it's done wonders to work together. I also welcome, and I know we need to definitely reach out to Taos Pueblo, to the Pico Ries Pueblo, and also open those lines of communication. I think it's important. We sometimes forget that we all live here. We should all be working and talking to each other and collaborating.
I appreciate that a lot. You're right. Our, all of our local governments should be joining forces and communicating, collaborating. Thank you very much. Any, any other new business that we'd like to have considered going forward? Again, not our only opportunity, but just a good opportunity to say it out loud. Okay, Item B is Commissioners' announcements. I've actually got a couple. First off, on Saturday, there is a COVID and flu clinic happening just behind us at the old senior center by the sheriff's office from 11 to 3. First comes, first serve, register in advance at the New Mexico DOH vaccine website, which I don't have in front of me right now, if you can. But no insurance required, no questions asked, no ID required to be presented. So if you haven't gotten your boosters, everyone out there, 11 to 3 Saturday, flu shots will, as long as they, until they run out. And then Friday morning, there's a New Mexico Aseca Commission meeting happening here in town at Taos Soil and Water District at 10:00 AM. If folks are interested in joining, I think that that's for us up here, if we're interested in joining. And then tomorrow evening, as a, as a follow up to the federal legislation that was passed in late September for the Hermits Peaf Calf Canyon Assistance, the, the rules and regulations, like the comment period opened on that in November, mid-November, and closes January 13. So in the process, there's a series of public meetings, including one tomorrow evening around in Pinellasco at the high school, at the school complex from 5:30 to 7:00. So the public can come, ask questions, make their comments for the record, as that comment period kind of widens down over the next two weeks. There'll be another one on the 5th of January at Marta High School and one on January 9th in Angel Fire. So encourage the public and Commissioners as we, as we can to be there. So tomorrow night in Pinellasco, 5:30. Any other announcements, Commissioners?
So Madam Chair, if I may ask our county manager, because as we get invited to all these meetings, and certainly we never know who's going to be attending, how would you like for us to proceed? I, for one, will be at the Aseca meeting.
Actually, is it, is it, good point, Commissioner Beal. Is it too late to notice quorum for the Aseca meeting Friday morning at 10:00 AM?
It's not.
72 hours, correct?
Yeah, we kind of missed that, but that's, thank you, Commissioner Beal, for bringing that up. We should have probably talked about this when we passed the open meetings resolution. Not all the times do I get to see everything that you get invited to. But if you could let me know what you've been invited to, or forward me the email, or let me know, hey, you might need to post a notice of a quorum. Renell, post the notice. Anissa or myself generally goes in that order and will post the notice of potential quorum. It's also a good practice, if you are attending the meeting, not to sit with one another, to maybe sit separately, because there could be a public perception that of the two of you or three of you are sitting down together, that you guys are discussing county business and, and you guys are probably just talking, hey, they made a good point in that Aseca meeting. But then there's that perception out there. So maybe try to mingle or sit with other folks attending, attending the function and just try to keep me or Renell and Anissa informed of what you're attending and we'll post the notice of potential quorum.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. That's a great reminder. And Brent, you added extra great reminders for us at the beginning of the year. So 72 hours, we are too late for 10:00 AM Friday, right? So I know, Commissioner Beal, you said that, that's just, I just want to like, get this straightened now so we don't have a quorum violation. Is there anyone else who's interested in going to the New Mexico Aseca Association meeting Friday morning?
What was that again? Repeat that.
10:00 AM at Taos Soil and Water Conservation District for the New Mexico Aseca Association.
Oh, no.
Okay, then I will join you and try to break the habit of sitting near you. I know we, yes. I know the perception. I get that. And, but we're very careful. We certainly don't do what we're not supposed to do, but I get it.
And it is, it is hard because over the next two years, I'm sure we'll be at funerals or weddings together or some of those type of functions. And we traditionally have not posted funerals or notices of, for weddings, but because for sure, there should be no public business going on at those. But technically, we're supposed to be posting those notices for even those type of functions if all of you are attending.
So Madam Chair, it just seems like we need to communicate a little bit. Absolutely. And if I could also announce, I know our manager stated that there's two of us already have shown interest to go to NACO. I did want to share that I'm interested in attending more so the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Policy Steering Committee. And Mr. Hadamio, I'll need your help on, on how to proceed with that. But what's really important is that the farm bill is up for discussion. And so I think it's important that, that we're there to make sure that we're being taken care of or that we're, we know what's going to happen in the future in regards to rural areas and farming and whatnot.
Yeah, and just, and other items in there. And gentlemen, those steering committees that are within the National Association of Counties does help guide NACO with, what they give policy recommendations to Congress, like saying, hey, the farm bill is good as is, thumbs up, or, or it needs this tweak or that tweak, thumbs down. So when we sit on one of those steering committees, we get to help direct NACO in what they either, you know, support or suggest or don't support. So that's why those, those seats are kind of important. And it would be wonderful to see Commissioner Beal on the Ag Steering Committee. I have since last year sat on the Energy, Environment and Land Use Steering Committee. And it's, it's a great organization to get involved with. It really does, you know, what, what they, what National Association of Counties recommends at the federal level does carry some weight. So.
Madam Chair, and to add, for example, NACO was very instrumental in the securing a 15-year funding for the National Heritage Areas. And so that is really big. And so that means that I believe there's 33 National Heritage Areas that can continue doing their work and securing, I mean, what's the word, protecting rather, the agricultural and traditions and cultures within their areas.
Excellent. Thanks, guys. Any further announcements?
I just, I wanted to make a comment, Madam Chair. You know, I've, I served on the US Department of Agriculture Farm Service Agency Taos County Board for, for several years. And one of the things that we came across was obviously federal funding, but federal funding stems from surveys that go out to the community. And unfortunately, here in Taos County, we have a hard time reporting what we actually have. So then when it comes to allocating or voting for the amount of funds that come to Taos County, our information is not necessarily accurate. Because a lot, a lot of our people here are concerned that they don't want the federal government involved in their business. They don't want the federal government to know what they own, so on and so forth. And I think that's an issue that we have across Taos County. And I'm not sure what we can do to help with this situation, but that's, it hurts when it comes to federal funding because the, the statistics are not accurate because of the misinformation or the information that's not given back to the powers that be.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascheranos. I think that's important. And I think it's a, a good notice to us that we might have work to do on, on both sides, on the government's side to like, make that point clear that, hey, don't judge us just on the survey results. And also here on the ground to say, hey, folks, it's okay to represent your actual, your actual situation so that we can get whatever kind of assistance our community deserves. Thank you. Any other announcements, Commissioners?
Other than we had the opportunity to attend the inaugural for the governor and we use the, I say we because Commissioner, or shall I say, Madam Chair and I use these opportunities to network. And so we did, in fact, we were able to attend and did just that, network.
Okay. Any, any further comments? Then that brings us to Item 17, which is adjournment at 11:07 on January 3rd. Thank you, everybody.